When we were, when we were selected a few weeks ago as your construction manager, we talked a little bit in the board meeting, in the session, that we were going to talk a little bit about a workshop. And just to kind of give you a, this would be like the first of a number of workshops that we probably will be going through throughout the process of the project. This first one is just to give you kind of an overall view of what the project timeline would be. Talk a little bit about the pre-referendum process that's going to be going on pretty much now, and then what happens right after that in pre-construction. Talk a very brief period about the financial planning piece of it too. And then if there are any questions and answers or questions that you have during this whole thing, please feel free to ask, and we'll get through them pretty quickly. As we said before, we can, I think we can get this in about 15 minutes or so. And if you'd like, however long the questions take, they don't take. So, the first piece of this, we wanted to talk a little bit about the overall project This process is going to take probably longer than you may think. Right now, we're at the very beginning there in the green spot where we're going through an architectural selection process. An RFP has been developed, at least a first draft has been developed. We'll be sending that out. I think the district is going to be sending it out in the coming days. I would assume it'll be next week. And I believe the intent of the district is to have an architect that would be on board, or at least presented to the board at the next board meeting. At that point, they and we will be going through the building condition survey process, and the planning process, and planning to a referendum. After the referendum is voted upon, then we've got the design, we've got SED approval process, and then the bidding process, and then after that, when we get bids in, we go into construction. Now, the timeline that we're talking about, right now, what we pretty much know is this. We know that the design takes about six months, we know that the SED approval process takes about eight months. We want to have about a, between one and two months for the bidding, and then the construction would start after that. Now, typically, what we don't necessarily know, because we don't know the size of the project or the scope of the project, we don't really know what the construction timeline is at this point. And we really don't know what the referendum planning time on the other side is, because we're not really, we haven't gotten into that discussion really. We talked a little bit at one time about referendum potentially being voted upon in December, or potentially January of next year. Or potentially, it would go out further than that, perhaps into next year. And we'll all be talking about that in the coming month or so, as we get everybody on board. But if you look at that, you're talking about 14, 16 months, and what we try to do is aim for the end of that process to be, to be in the spring of whatever given year it is. Because then we can start construction right at the, at the end of the school year, sometime in the spring. So, if you do the math and everything, that takes you back, that takes you back to around December or January of a given year, where you would, where, that's kind of the, that's the ideal spot, if you want to start construction in May or June of the following year. So, as you see, you're not going to, probably not going to get a finished product, probably for the next two to two and a half years. So, we have to plan for those kinds of things when we're doing, when we're going through the scope definition process, and we're going to get into that a little bit. Tonight, we're going to talk briefly about the phases of the project, again, pre-referendum, pre-construction, and construction. In pre-referendum, right now, we're, again, we're at the point right now where we're trying to put that team together. The team, as you see over on the left, would be the district, the architect, us as the construction manager, your financial consultant. Perhaps, and typically, we would like to have a facilities committee that might be put together of residents within the district, on a committee that would be involved in the whole process, because not only does it bring in good information, but it brings in buy-in to the process too.
And it's an advisory committee. Their role is to seek out, understand what the, what we're doing, what we're investigating, what we're pricing, be involved with delivering the community in the fall, and then, then they make a recommendation to the board, and then they're, and then they're finished.
How big of a committee are you generally looking for?
That kind of depends. And there are some committees that we've had that are maybe five or six people, and there are other, we had a committee that was made up of about 40 people.
If you want buy-in, maybe bigger is better.
It could be. It also, it becomes a little unwieldy though, too. But on the other hand, you'll find that if you have, I can tell you, when we had 40, when the meetings kept going on for, this was about a year process, and as the meetings kept going on, it dwindled down to about five or six, frankly. So, it really does kind of depend on the process, and on what you guys want, really, when it comes down to it. And then, of course, you'll have your legal advice on the, on the team too. Now, through the pre-referendum process, we want-
Did you have a question?
That was my question, how big is that group?
Through the pre-referendum process, we just want to go through a little bit about what we're going to be doing through this process. Tom, if you want to go through that?
Right. Campus will take the lead. We will manage the meetings, organize everyone. The first step in that process is what we call scope definition. Working with your team, working with administration, we will look at all of your facilities and come at it from about three perspectives. The first is your bricks and mortar, your facilities, your BCS, the building condition survey, the absolute, how your buildings work and function, independently if there are students in there or not. The second way we come at is from the academic perspective. Okay, how does your academics work? What are your needs? Okay, you have new science wing, but do you, is your, is your technology need upgrading? This is, whatever it might be, we can, athletics comes under academic type of thing. And then the third perspective we look at is from the site work perspective, because site work is treated differently from state ed. No matter if it's sports fields, or if it's traffic flow, and/or if it's transportation, site work is treated differently from aid purpose. So after we capture everything, and there's three reports going around, by the way, there's three books that are there, just for you to take a look at as we're, as we're going through this. I do need to take those back, if that's of another district that we're developing a project. That's how we report back to you what we have found. That is one of the pre-construction report number three. There could be three to five of these at any one time.
So this is basically a proposal of what needs to be done?
That is correct. It is, it is information of what needs to be done. And then we even priced it with contingencies, et cetera. You saw those that are in there. And it's a tool that we use. Now, after we do the cost estimating, that goes into that, and we tie that up with the architects, work with them, we then, also, I'm going to skip the third bullet in there, but we also then, you'll see at the end of this report, there are schedules. We then draft schedules, because money is a function of time. So we have to know in a timeline how all of this will work. We then work through a prioritization with you. You'll see there's several columns in there that work through on how we prioritize. And this, this one happens, being it's a big district happens to have 40 million in needs, well, they're not going out with a $40 million referendum. It is, in a process, we will work through you to establish what is a priority basis. But all capital projects, every one of them, is every, the scope is divided by the dollar sign. And the dollar sign is on local share. And what we mean by the scope versus the financial reality, it is what, we have, what is a local share? How much money do you have that you would want to put local share up against a capital project? And you, there are building aid formulas. And if your building aid happens to be 50%, it means for every dollar that you have, you could do a $2, zero tax impact capital project. And if your building aid is 75%, that means a, every dollar, you could do a $4 million, or $4 capital project for every dollar that you had. So, they all have, under the philosophy of doing a zero tax impact, they all, capital projects are divisible by a dollar sign.
Is it, why, and I would just say, I think it would be very difficult for us to say there'd be zero tax impact. I know other districts have said it, and have come to regret saying that there'd be a zero tax impact on that.
Okay, but that's something that we would work through with a financial advisor that would hopefully give you color level that we should build a project around having the overall impact of, you know, trying to be there anyway.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
And the last bullet that's on there is about proposition planning. That is a concept, again, if we tried to, if we made it, made a goal of putting a zero tax impact project out to the voters, many districts we have seen have then also looked at what a Prop 2 might look like. And a proposition 2 might have a tax impact, absolutely would have a tax impact, but Prop 2 has a de facto, would only be able to be passed if Prop 1 passed. So it is absolutely written in that way legally. It protects everybody, it makes, gives the voters a choice, it then lets, it lets you take a look at some things that you may not be able to look at if it was a zero tax, a smaller capital project. So it's just philosophically some things to look at.
And strategy wise, you might want to put like a large athletic item in the second part, and say that you can only get to two if you pass one, to kind of provide some incentive?
That's correct.
Yes. And then you're also, you're protecting the work that you pretty much have to do. For example, the roof work, or any, any of those types of work. And you protect that, that part of the proposition, and then you put the other one that might be a little bit more either controversial, or, or some people may not, may not be as, you know, on board with that as they might be on the, on the must-do type of work. And it's, it's worked out, it's worked out very, very well, frankly. I don't, I'm not sure I can remember though, one that we've had where they haven't passed both. But, but at the very least, you know, at least you have, and by the way, the second, if there is a very strong contingent, you bring up the sports possibility, if there's a strong contingent there, that may bring out more people to vote on the first one, who may not typically come out to vote.
It drives, sometimes Prop 2 will drive Prop 1.
Yeah. Now, when, when the project is defined, once we get to that point, and it's kind of, that's kind of in that, the asterisk right there, but when the project is defined, then what we would be doing is then coordinating, or could coordinate, the entire process of the public information campaign. And we'll talk about that in a second, but, and that would all be on your behalf too. What we would do is we would create, along with the district, a communications plan. And you want to have a plan that, that you control, not that other people out in the, in the district are controlling. You control the message, you control the tone of it, and as Tom was saying before, if you put together a forward-looking plan, something that's out there that says, this is what we're planning on doing for the next three years, five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever you want to do, it shows the district, and it shows the residents of the district, that you have control, and you're thinking about these kinds of things, and you're not just doing something on a snap, and then may undo it in another five or 10 years. And we found that that's very important, especially if you want to keep doing capital projects throughout on a, on a, almost on a regular basis, if that's possible. We'll help put together a public information campaign. It's got to be a very consistent message that you put out. It has to be informational versus promotional. In other words, you have to show, you have to tell people, this is the project, but you can't necessarily go out and say, vote yes on it, as a group. You, you're, you're out there giving them information. It's kind of like, you remember Jack Webb back in the day, when it, just the facts, man, just the fact, that's, that's what it is. It's just you're giving the facts out to the people, so that they can make their own decision. What you can do, though, is to try to get them to come out and vote. That's the big thing that, that the board, I think, and the, and the district can, can, can really help. And that is just getting people out to vote. It's very important. We also assist in the, in the preparation of the, of the materials that go out to the We, we use, we use what I call components, and that is, whenever you, for example, and we can show you on the, I'll show you on the next slide, because you use various mediums for this, for these components. For example, we've got newsletters, there are fact sheets, there are flyers, there's brochures, there's website, but everything that you put in there, we'd like to do the exact same thing for one piece, and another, and another, and another. In other words, the financial piece, we like to use a pie chart. Well, that exact same pie chart should be used on everything, because frankly, if you don't do that, sometimes things kind of change somehow. It's almost like when you, you know, when you do that thing with the kids.
It's a consistent, consistent message. It says, we know, we know what we're doing, it says, have confidence in us, and it works.
And then once that's, once the referendum has been passed, we go into the next phase, that's the blue phase up there at the top, of pre-construction, and Tom, I'll put you-
Not to spend a lot of time on this, I know it's late, but once a referendum passes, we go into the planning process, where we plan the project out on paper, we work with your administration. We, the first thing that we do is, is we perform a series of estimates through the pre-construction. While the architects are designing, then, and giving us more and more information, and more and more detail, they'll go from six drawings to 600 drawings, then we do fighter and fighter estimates all the way through it. But what the estimates do is protect the budget always, so we know where we are at any one point. We get into scheduling development, we plan out the actual work with your team, that is, we use site safety and logistics planning and phasing plans. We do constructibility reviews, that minimize change orders on a project for safety, for better term. And then we'll also work with the administration to plan a bid strategy that is kind of important, make, make sense to take a look at it from a financial aid perspective. If we want to put a package out that might have single primes, roofs, or something simple, windows, or anything like that that is simple, we get a project in, you get the final cost report done, you get your aid flow faster. So, there's different strategies on why we would do, you know, specific bidding practices. And we also have to, everything we do has got to be by the New York State bidding law, so that's, that's all we set about.
Yes, and the bidding, the bidding process is, is very important too, because we have to, we have to go out and find bidders. We have to tell them that it's out there, we have to make sure that people understand that we've got a project coming out. And we actively go through that process to get as many bidders as we can, so that we get more competition, and, you know, more competition is lower, lower pricing. So, that's-
Then after that would be construction, but we're, it's-
Yeah, we're not going to get into construction tonight by any means, but that kind of gives you an overall kind of process viewpoint of what's going to happen here. And if we're at the very, 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 very beginning, there's a, there's a little bit to go here. So, are there any questions that you have, just concerning, just the process, or anything like that?
What is the next step from here?
The next step will be architect selection. And we'll be going through that over the next, what, four weeks or so, three, four weeks? I think it's somewhere around here.
It's aggressive, yes.
You're right.
So the architect's selection, hopefully by the August board meeting, I think we're looking at potentially?
August 6?
August, August 6.
I'm having a hard time that you would select an architect when you haven't figured out what we're going to do yet. Aren't, aren't some architects specific to certain things?
No, actually, with, what we are looking at, yeah, and what we are looking at are architects that only do, or not only do, but are very, very into K-12 work.
It's our primary focus, is architects that do K-12 education in Western New York.
Don't you have some favorites that you always like, that you always lean on all the time?
It's not biased.
We're, we're not biased, but we're going to tell you if there's one that designs picnic shelters, and versus one that is very substantial in K-12, and, and Tom knows them, and the superintendent knows them, there's-
We pick, they don't pick it up.
Yeah, you'll be selected, we don't select it.
Yeah, we're, all we're doing is we're, we're helping along with the process itself, but you will be going through that process, and, and we'll be there for you to maybe ask questions and things like that, because we certainly have worked with every firm, I think, that you're going to be looking at. So, we do know them very well. And there are some that are better than others, but I can tell you though, that everyone will be K-12 oriented, and they, they know what they're doing. All right? That part I do know.
So if we were to do a smaller capital project, hoping to do it, this is, go out for vote in December, and we add it on a second, you know, piece of it, could we put on like the athletic field, but not be doing it right away, do that other democratic person then? Because I think everyone's worried over getting the field turned down.
And you, you-
Is it going to flip off?
Yeah, the dog's age, yeah.
Yeah, Marissa hit him up already.
We've already gone through that whole thing.
Staging it?
Yeah, exactly.
Staging it for reimbursement?
Yeah. The issue for, specifically for sports fields and site work, is the New York State Seeker It requires you to do, and this is just my opinion, this is what we, but this is what we've seen with most of them, and you're, we want you, this is legal, we want you to get legal opinion on it if you'd have to go down, but it is a, you would probably have to do a Type 1 seeker discovery process.
Does everyone know what a seeker process is?
Seeker is S-E-Q-R, it's A, and it's a state environmental quality review.
You have to, it is, you do a discovery, the architect writes an opinion, you do a, an application, and you declare yourself lead agency, and you're, you virtually say, in so many words, is that the project that you are doing, even though it involves more than two acres of land, does not have a negative, has a negative impact on the environment, that there's nothing that you're doing that is going to impact the environment. In other words, you're not building into any type of wetlands, you're not doing anything that's going to, you're not going to dump more water into the sewer system, et cetera, et cetera. And you make a statement in that, and you give, you give the community time to react to it, it's a 90-day process. So, that, but I'm, but I'm not telling you, giving you legal advice, I'm just telling you what we've experienced. If an attorney says you can do it in 45 days, that cuts your timeline very much down. So, to try to get that done between now and December, if you wanted to vote in December, is virtually impossible, I don't see how you can do that, just to do the Type 1 seeker process. Unless, unless an attorney says that you don't have to do that, and you can do it in 30 days, and 45 days, or whatever, and go through it.
But you can also think though, about, and many districts have done this, going to vote in January too. I'm not sure, I'm a big proponent of going into February, or March, or anything like that, but we've had a number that have gone into January too. But even then, it's going to be very difficult to hit that, that 90 days, and then you've got 45, there's, there's part of that timeline that we were showing earlier, there's a 45-day period whereby the board approves the project, and the board says, okay, this is the project that we're going to, that we put together, we now want to send it out to the voters. At that point in time, at that board meeting, you now have 45 days that you have to give the voters to understand what the project is all about, that's that-
That's similar to your May.
That campaign, the public information campaign that we were talking about. And in that 45-day period, so you've got, you've got the 90 days plus the 45 days, that's, and plus you, we've got to do the work to kind of define what we're talking about here too.
We've also seen-
I'm not sure, it's totally, it's totally impossible, but it's, it's a very, very tight, tight timeframe. But I can say too, if it's, if it's what you want to do, and it's, if there's an absolute reason that you need to do that, we'll, we'll talk to the architect, and we'll say, okay, this is what we're going to try to do, let's lay it out. But I just, it really kind of depends too, on how much your needs are defined right now on the basis.
So, I'm realizing more than likely, we're going to probably be able to do a small capital project for December.
You could, you could, or you could wait and do the whole thing, you could, you could vote on it next year. And it's, it, that's, that's what it kind of comes down to. I guess that's the, the reality of the situation, and there's, and there's, I'm not sure that there's, there's a whole lot wrong with that, because then you also get a chance to tell, you know, you get the word out a little bit more throughout that period of time, and maybe people get more kind of on board with that whole process.
There's been some conversation about going out, even with a smaller one at first, for the health and safety, that would possibly come back faster, you know, the doors, or something similar to this. So it's, it's gone in two different directions, or waiting, as you said, too.
So there are a few different ways, I think we should probably, I think we can wait until we get the architect on board too, and maybe even talk to them about their feeling about the process also, but I think we have to take a look at what you really have right now, literally on the, on the quote, on the list, just to see how we can put something together if we, if we need to.
Because we want to burn out people by going out a couple separate times, I think it's wiser to have it all together and do the two option plan, where they have to get by one to get to two. You lose the ability, if you break it all up like that, you start losing the ability to do that.
But at least what I'm hearing, if I'm not mistaken, that'd be very difficult to do this December, in terms of the seeker and everything else in the public input.
Yeah, but I guess we don't really have enough information at this point to even-
Right.
Let's talk about that. Let's see what comes back.
And then what about like the state aid and all that? Don't we want to get this going now?
Well, let's, let's put it this way, you will get the state aid once the project's completed, so-
No, but it'll also affect our tax rate.
What he's saying is if you did a small million, $2 million, small one, now, would that, it would be difficult to say no to.
So, if you put up a project in December, let's just say-
Or January.
Or January, and then you get the ball rolling, when do you think realistically, if you did a small project, that approval from SED and all that, it would start what the following?
If it was like sidewalks, doors, or something.
It would be the following spring. It would be the following spring.
So the following spring and let's say the construction period is six, eight months, somewhere around there?
Not this spring coming up, it would be the following.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, right.
We would take out a bond for that, the project would be done fairly quickly because it's a smaller project, and then the aid would start flowing once that final cost report has been submitted to the state. So whether you do it this December or the following December, again, if you parcel it out in pieces, it doesn't matter when you actually start that. So part one is a million and three or whatever the case may be, and part two is a different amount, you segment them so no one part is a $20 million part, for example, because there, it would take so long to complete the project that it would take a long time for you to get the final cost report in, in which case you won't have the aid coming back in. So it's a staging strategy.
How many stages have you done, like, have you done like five or six or like a 10-year, you know, do you do a five-year plan? Is that what we're anticipating? Is that what you're-
Yeah.
We have, we have clients that we do capital projects with every three to five years that are, are, you know, they could be $5 million projects, they could be 15, and we've done, one district we've done a 30 and a 30 and a 20 is every three, four, five years to get some of their things back on. Some districts haven't done anything in a long period of time and they've gotten very pent up in demands and it could go on for a long period of time. But, but, but every project is divisible by the dollar sign in your local share and that's one of the, you know, the issues that you had is that you don't have any capital reserves or a large amount of capital reserve.
So for instance, we have about 400,000 in our capital reserve. We actually had our first capital project for a million and given our aid ratio, that probably would be tax neutral. You go into phase two, we would have used up all of our capital reserve we had.
That's right. So, and if you want to tie that, if you want to tie that second proposition into that potentially, you could still go out to that and make that first phase, that first piece, that first proposition tax neutral.
Mm-hmm.
And tack on, and tack on that other piece that you want to do with the, with the sports, for example, with the field.
And maybe some academics too. There's philosophies.
Right, right. And, and again, it's just, it's one of those things that's just, it's going to take some time to kind of put that whole plan together and to see what you really want to do and how you want to do it.
I think part of the complication in all of this really has been is that, that there's a vision of what we want, but we don't know what it looks like, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
You know, and all of it, that dead horse again, is GLP. And really trying to have an understanding of are we a district of two buildings or a district of three? And if we're a district of two buildings, then what do those two buildings look like? And how do we fit our kids in? And how stable are we in our enrollment and can we actually do it? Because I think there's going to be a strong contingent in this community that says, "Really? You're going to sell or lease or tear down or do whatever with GLP and then you want an addition on one of the other ones?" So that we have to contend with as well. There hasn't been an enrollment study done in even a really long time. We can pretty much say that we're coming off of class sizes of about 150 with incoming kindergarten at 80 or 90. Well, what does that mean? And that makes a huge difference as to what we're actually thinking about doing.
This happened before historically though, I think in the 90s.
That's right.
There was a few years trying to then jump back up again.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yep. And you listened to Bob tonight. But I still think the community, that's, it's different now. I think people are leaving Western New York. Well, and I'm hearing from Bob in our vet tax, I said, I said, "Please come in and talk with me" because he's seeing growth because he's part of that whole assessment piece. And he said, "What's happening is the older people are moving out and the young couples are moving in, but they don't have children yet. And we also know that our young couples are waiting to have children." So there's a good possibility that an enrollment study, as Tom has talked about numerous times, could show us 10 years down the road, this is what you're going to have. And, and that's so important for us to not redo what happened before, was to mothball a building that has never been brought up to snuff and then open it again and not do anything with it again. We can't, we can't support that.
The G, and you brought up the GLP question, and, and I think that alone is going to need enough thought and, and just discussion. Because if you, if you do something from a capital project standpoint and you go and build something and then decide later on, like a year later or two years later or whatever, whatever you're going to decide about that school building, it could be against what you just built. And then you're, you're not going to have a revolt, but you're going to have some very unhappy people, I can tell you that. But you also- That's part of that process we were talking about.
But also, the community will have a question about, about that building, okay? And it does need to be addressed. And if you, if you don't have information and you have no intent on it, you don't tell them that.
That's right.
But it's, it is, it's all, if it's out there, then it's out there and it's something that we need to address and have the correct study and the correct story for it.
Exactly.
Where it is. If you're not, if you're not ready to close it down, then that's the answer, is that we don't see that happening in the next few years. We just, we've been through two districts in the last three years that went through consolidations and they were, they were not fun on the administration on board. They were not fun. They went through some real soul searching through those. And I can tell you this, one superintendent retired right after going through it and one board president got beat over it in another district, the election coming back around. So the communities are very, very much in tune. I had, I had a superintendent once ask me about, it was new to a district, he said, "What is this so-and-so building?" I said, "Oh, that's a building the district closed about 10 years ago." He said, "Well, why are they kicking my butt over it?" Because they, you don't forget in a community when you close a school.
I think the closest one to us is Collins Center. I mean, Eden certainly closed, it's East Eden School, but Collins Center closed their school, part of the Springville District in the 1970s, and the Collins Center contingent voted no for the next 20 some odd years. I just, you could always tell where the no's were coming from.
Yeah.
And the other thing for us to look at in terms of phasing, one of the things that we do want to keep in mind as well in terms of planning is looking at our maximum cost allowance that we're actually allowed from, from the state. So if we plan everything in phase one, for instance, they look at, and correct me if I'm wrong, what a five-year average of, of what they will allow you. So if we've already had projects in the past couple of years, even if they're small, they'll count towards our maximum cost allowance of what we're able to have the state authorize in terms of the maximum, what they will provide. So if we put everything, let's say in phase one, we go to phase two, well, you know, we may have hit our cap. So that's all part of that plan.
That's what Michael was talking about earlier.
But if you have a referendum every year for three or four years in a row, can you add that with projects and that has a public burnout on it?
No.
No, they get it, they get it in a routine.
Not that often.
Usually, I mean, you, you go through the, that process, the timeline that we were talking about before, and, and then the next one would come up. Maybe, I'll give you a good example, is right now we're going through 10 tons planning for a next project. The first project was a very large project and we're still in construction and we're now talking about going out for another vote that would go almost right after the construction is complete. So you would start that next one. Williamsville has done it a number of times where they go every probably three or four years, that's my home district, and we, we're just, I've said it before.
You are routinely in a-
Yeah, we're, we're like lemons, we just go to the voter and we eat it. Yes, that's just, we, they trained us very well to do that.
But they're successful projects, okay? There's-
And they see what they're doing, yeah, they see that there's a plan there and they see why that, why it's happening.
We make, we make a plan, if you're renovating a cafeteria, how do you do that and keeps, or a library, you know, the 365 days space, how do you do those types of things? So when you build a plan and you make a success, the community buys right into it. If you, if, if you have a catastrophe, a capital project, they remember that for a long period of time. So that, that's why we're here to make sure you have a good one.
Did we talk about the architect while I was-
Yes.
What did we talk about?
We've already picked it.
That's how I feel today too, it's been four hours on that RFP.
No, we talked about the potential of getting the architect on board to the point that they would be brought into the, into the board meeting.
August 6.
August, was it 6th or 7th?
6th.
So they would do an interview and a presentation to the board immediately prior to the board meeting for August 6th?
We didn't talk about that.
Oh, sorry.
Nope.
Excuse me?
We really need four people.
With all four people, that's right, we need four. And then they would come to the board for recommendation to approval for the architect on August 6th if we stay within our timeline.
And by the way-
We have a shortlist because we went out last, I'm sorry, John.
I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
We do have a shortlist because we went out last spring with a RFP. And those would be the same shortlist that we were comfortable with.
When we looked at the front entrance over here.
Yeah, last spring. Did everybody? Do you, did you look at the, I mean, you guys do this all the time, do you have any ideas?
Or a don't stadium would be great.
Marissa trained him well, there you go.
That's right, she told him.
Oh, Marissa had him the whole time we were in the executive session.
Well, you were in the other room, she was going on. No, I, I actually, I think, you know, the district has a, has already developed a list of a number of things that we should be taking a really good look at. And then, and that is, those are more of the building condition survey stuff that Tom was talking about before, more like the fixing the roof or fixing doors or fixing floors or those types of things. When it comes to the academics, now, that's really going to be up to you all and, and then the site work after that. So there's a, there's a good, there's a good list started, but there's a ways to go yet.
Good. Colin, you all right? Barb, any questions? Mike breathing anything? Mike Burns, Mr. President? It's good?
It's great, way to lose her.
I see it. Patty?
Okay, thank you, Scott. Do the architects and contractors see this information?
The architects certainly are part of that, the contractors, no. The contractors are, are three steps down from that, but if a contractor asked us what our budget was for electrical, we would tell them, okay, what our budget is, okay? We're not giving them any other information than that, but they need that to know for their bonding, to make arrangements when they're bidding on a project. So there's reasons why we do, and we work with contractors, especially the good ones, to make sure that they are interested in our project. But the architects, absolutely, the architects help us with that because we have to understand some of the detail. If it's a terrazzo floor, oh, what kind of terrazzo floor we put it in. So they're just saying, "Let's, let's hold $17 a square foot versus 14." So that, that's, we work with them and the ones that hopefully are on the shortlist are ones that, you know, know the game also and have worked with us.
And that, that's part of what we were talking about before, with putting that team together. I know the, the district really hasn't used a construction management concept before and, and, but that's kind of the core of that whole concept is that you're putting that team together right up front and then everybody puts all that type of information together throughout the planning process so that you're ready for not only the referendum, but then the construction.
We also, Sandy, while you're gone, we talked about the concept of a community type of committee, ad hoc, of, and it is advisory type of committee.
Absolutely, that has been from the start.
Okay, that's great, that's great. We'll help with organizing that. But the, the point is, is that through this process, we can come back to the board and give them updates in the, before the referendum, where we are, where we, you know, we stand here's, and we can give the board certainly the reports too, and so they know where, okay, this is what we found, it is, you know, you have, you have a lot of square footage, could that first report be 20, 25 million? It could be, okay? It could be, when you start adding all these up, I mean, it's, it, it could be a lot of money. Are we ever even thinking about any? No, we're not even thinking of anything like that, don't get me wrong, but the, the point is that that's our first step. Now we'll immediately go to what are the priorities in this? And, and that's what you're seeing, how that system works.
So you're seeing $25 million of need and then how do we pare that down and go from there?
That's correct, correct. You, you may have, and you, you have 500, about 500,000 square foot of space between the three buildings.
Easy.
You, you automatically right there is, is, is about $10 million in roofing. You have $10 million in roofing you'll have to do over the next 20 years. Think about it that way.
Thank God we just finished one.
No, I mean, it's right, you did just finish one, so I, just little things like that.
I think, I think when we start to think about the exterior of our buildings right now, just as a case in point, the masonry and the points are just, it's a disaster. And even the windows at the elementary school, you can see, if you really look, you can see light through them.
Windows in that building could be half a million to a million dollars between doors and windows in that building. I'm just-
It adds up quickly.
There's, there's a really referendum, I'm on, I mean, for, you know, just-
That's right.
So it will go with it.
Let me just put new windows in there and just put a new roof on the elementary. Yep, you got a roof, you got your roof done and you have some new windows at elementary, but not all. Any else? Well, Cindy, you've been like such a wonderful person back there. Did you, anything you wanted to ask before you talked?
Where's the picture?
We're buying for structure.
Who they do?
Yeah, she's, she's already brought it in. No.
Next time I go bring pizza, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you very nice.